Standing up in McKinney, this is According to Callous. And we are talking about episode 404 coming to you on the 26th of April. Where did the month go? And for better or for worse, we have got another episode almost entirely devoted to the shenanigans of our local school district. Now I have tried to stay objective for the purposes of my podcast. I have, I've tried to be objective on how I look at things. I mean, I call them as I see them, but I want to give people the benefit of the doubt. I want to be fair, you know, and I am the fool that still believes that fair play is the way to go. The Marcus de Queensberry rules, if you will. But I wonder if Trump wasn't on to something. So before we get into the show, let me like, share and subscribe to the show. Let me remind you to do that. Every little bit helps. I'm not quite sure what's up with the algorithm. It's been interesting. Some days I get 200 listens and the other days I get 1,400. Who knows? All I can say is I'm here, I'm not going anywhere. I'm me, I'm going to continue to be me and that's not going to stop. It's just not going to stop. So I, I watched the school board, uh, public commentary tonight. Had other things to take care of, so I couldn't be there in person. And a couple of my friends were there and they spoke, did a good job. And I gotta say, the board meeting, the public comments, if you will, was about evenly spaced, right? Let's say about half and half speakers for speakers against only, I think two or three people deviated from the, we don't like the school board and we love the school board. And I'm not excited about either avenue of approach. Let me explain, so there was clapping for both sides, right? And everybody got to speak and believe it or not, based upon the video and the, and the audio, pretty much everybody was well behaved. Now, one of the Mark Steel guys or whatever his name is, was there and he spent all of his time calling out his enemies as opposed to doing anything productive. You know, and I, I feel sad for the guy. I mean, I guess if, if my child hated themselves and hated me enough that they wanted to mutilate their bodies and I would only sit there and contribute to that, I would probably be angry too, just speculating. I mean, I hate to bring in that, but I mean, it's public record. The guy wears it on his sleeve, so it's only fair, right? I don't want to go there. I don't want to drag a minor into it, but as a, as a father, if my kid came to me and told me that they were having that issue, I would like to believe that my world would stop and I would get them appropriate counseling and I would, try and talk them off the ledge, if you will. I mean, to mutilate yourself, sterilize yourself for life because you're having problems. And look, I realize it runs the gamut and for the record, I don't think anybody wants these people dead. In fact, it's because we care about them, because we care about all people, that we want them to receive appropriate care. We want them to be talked off the ledge. We don't want them cutting off healthy body parts because they're having a mental issue. That's, that is good Christian brotherly love. I mean, I have it on good authority that at least one member of the school board is a Christian and she knows how to act like one. So clearly she would understand the concept of brotherly love and you look out for your brothers and sisters and you don't let them do things that would hurt themselves. But far be it from me to criticize somebody else's faith, far be it from me to say somebody is not saved or somebody's going to hell. I will merely point out that we're clearly instructed that you'll know them by their fruits. And I'd like to believe that there's enough fruit that at some point, somebody looking at me from a distance might say, yeah, you know, he had some rough edges. Yeah, you know, I didn't necessarily agree with all those political things, but I had no doubt in my mind that he kneeled before Jesus. I can live with that, I really can. Going forward, I just, I, I don't know how much more time I want to devote to something that really doesn't seem to be making any difference. They have been there for a year straight, trying to accomplish something. And now all the slogans are out, you know, these are the hate slate, they're bigots, they're haters, they're Nazis. I've already mentioned that, right? You know, you disagree with me, you must be a Nazi. Okay. There's a whole lot of silly statements there. Some of the things that I heard was we want to destroy education. Well, I shouldn't say we, because I wasn't there, but the people in the quote unquote hate slate, which is bogus, but their opponents, let's go, let's go with opponents. Their opponents want to destroy public education. No, no, everybody that shows up to those board meetings is a strong proponent, proponent of public education. Even though it's properly labeled as government education, but we will avoid that for the time being. They believe that it should exist and it should do a good job and it should offer opportunities to all the students there. So that's a silly statement. It's a silly statement that they want to ruin education. It's a silly statement that they want to make everything a charter school. And I found it somewhat interesting that one of the parents said that their child was in one of the charter schools, but they couldn't get the help that they needed in the charter school. They had to go back to the regular school. Well, the regular schools have unlimited funds and they are probably far better equipped to deal with learning disabilities or other issues than a private or a semi-private school. So there's no surprise there. But I don't believe there's any one solution that works for all students. And if public education was truly the gem that they wanted to be, that they claim that it's, even the opponents of the current school board wanted to be this, they would be adequately armed, prepared, figuratively speaking, to fight the battle against private schools, charter schools, homeschoolers. They would have things in place in order to properly provide things for children to set them off to life better equipped than what any of those other opportunities were. They're afraid of competition. They have a near monopoly, a near monopoly on education. And when the thought of that near monopoly being pulled back just a little bit, 5% sends a panic up their spine. Why is that? It's because they're ill-prepared to deal with competition. I have some solutions or some proposals for that. And I will revisit those shortly. The other thing that I found kind of interesting was the idea that, this is the only education and it must be free and it must be provided to all students. Okay. I think we all want an educated population. I don't think anybody's against that, so I'm not quite sure where they're coming from. And then somebody had the bright idea to read from the UN Declaration of Rights. I'm sorry, but that's not binding nor relevant in the independent state of Texas, right? The Republic of Texas or these United States, nobody cares what the UN has to say. And, and those words are meaningless in most of the other states or countries that belong to the UN. So it's socialist tripe. It's put out there to sell the morons. But again, use your own judgment. Those are some of the silly statements. All right, now let's go back and let's revisit for a few minutes. The idea that they are afraid to compete. So you have an organization by default that's taxpayer funded. You get X amount of money regardless of how many students show up in your school district. You get more money for more students. You can sign up and participate in other programs, which gets even more money. And let's just say hypothetically, and I don't know what the actual number is, and really it's not relevant because this is a thought experiment here, folks. You're getting $10,000 per student. Again, don't get lost in the detail, just follow me here for it. And you're able to provide, let's call it, A-level instruction and opportunities for every student that shows up. Now, for some reason, that number were to drop down to $9,500 per student. Is that a calamity? Does that mean that, that A-rated provision is going to drop for all your students? Some of your students or none of your students? Likewise, if you're able to do that at a $10,000 per student ratio, why do you need $11,000 per student? I mean, is it going to go up 10%? I mean, that's a 10% increase. Are we going to get a 10% better outcome? The law of diminishing return does come into play here somewhere, right? When you invest and you spend so much money, you can keep spending more, but you're not necessarily going to get a return for your value. And yes, I know this puts you in awkward position of putting a price tag on the education of your children and your grandchildren. But everything has a price, everything has an opportunity cost. So you have to decide, is it possible that maybe, and again, I'm just going to throw a number out there for a thought experiment. Maybe 5% of all students in McKinney ISD aren't able to get a good education from McKinney ISD. For whatever reason. Do we want to prevent those 5% of students from going somewhere else to get an education that's more fitting to their needs, their desires, what their parents want? And if we're going to interfere with that, why? What's the rationale? What, what's the loss here? What's, what's the harm? Now hypothetically, say we have a $10,000 per student average of money that we're getting. Now we know full well that probably half of those students really only have $8,000 spent on, right? They're only really seeing 80% of the money coming in towards them personally. So that must mean that some of those other students are getting 110 or 120% of that, right? They're getting, you know, 100, I'm sorry, $11,000 or $12,000 put towards their education. So again, hypothetically speaking, right? Cause you're going to get the average of 10,000 per student. If you were to take out 5% and say half of the 5% are the ones that are costing $12,000 per student, you're going to net out $2,000 more per student for the remaining students. By default, because they're going to go somewhere else. And I know that's uncomfortable and nobody really wants to be honest about it, but that is kind of what's at play here. Case in point, they talk about vouchers and most government education advocates are vehemently opposed to vouchers. They believe that that money belongs to the district. It doesn't belong to the parents. It's the government took the money away. Now it's going to go to the school district and the school district gets to decide how that money should be spent and the parents should have very little say on that matter. Well, there's a number of issues with that, but let's, let's just play along with this for a moment. Again, this is a thought process, right? We're going to have a thought experiment here. Set aside your personal concerns or your quest for details. The details are not important at the moment. It's just a thought experiment. You have a voucher system. Each student that does not participate in the government school, the public school system, parents receive an $8,000 credit or $7,000 credit or whatever magic number it is that's going to offset the cost to allow the parent to send their student to the school of their choice. So they're going to get their money back per student, right? But we're only giving them 60% or 70% or maybe it's 80%, who knows? And by giving them, meaning we're returning it to the people from which it came from in the first place, at least in theory. And they go and invest that in another school or they choose to homeschool or, or they go to the charter school. Now all those schools are receiving, let's call it between six and $8,000 worth of the money that the government took and is refunding back so that the parents can send their children elsewhere. The remaining money, what do you think happens with that? Well, I'm fairly certain the way it's written, the way, the way it stands right now, it stays in the school district. So that means the school district, again, based upon the simple numbers, is gaining either between $2,000 and $4,000 on average per student that's not actually there. That's extra money. That's a nice little slush fund. I mean, heck, you can hire another administrator with that kind of money. So it's really not about the money. The school districts and the administrators, they all know this. They can do the math involved with this. They know the averages, they've got accountants, even if they don't understand it, that can explain it to them in such a way that it makes sense. Even they know that it's a net positive on the cash flow side. So let me ask you, why do you think they don't want you to put your child in another school? What is it that you think they really fear? Now there are some out there that believe that at a certain tipping point, if you pull enough children out of the school district, the school district itself will fail. That's plausible, highly unlikely, but plausible. Do you really think that the state or the school district is going to allow itself to fail from not having enough money? Now granted, if you only have 10% of the students showing up, well, yeah, that's going to happen. But again, the school district is going to have to compete. They're going to have to innovate. They're going to have to find new ways to attract students. Remember I said, we're going to revisit that. So that's not a likely outcome. It's plausible, it's a possibility, but it's not very likely. Could it be that they just want to control the students? Could it be that they just want to indoctrinate slash educate the next generation? Could it be that they don't want you to know there are other options? Could it be that they don't want you to know there's another way? Could it be that they want to maintain control over the population as a whole? And this is just another way that they can ensure that's going to happen. And you'll notice I'm using the word they, and I'm being nebulous on purpose because depending who you're talking to, they're going to blame different groups of people. I'm not blaming any group of people. I'm just going to say the school district, the school administrators, the state school board, the state administration, however you want to look at it. They all have a vested interest in maintaining their organization. The more their organization grows, the more authority, power and money they have. So that's where their vested interest is, whether you believe it or not. So let me ask you. Now that we've established that the school district's not going to blow away in the dust. We've established that realistically, 5 to 10% of the students could get a better education somewhere else with specialized care, and they're only going to get a percentage of their money back from this deal. Now let's look at what's left. Let's say, again, this is a thought experiment, don't get lost on the details, focus on the concept. Let's say there's 20,000 students. You've now lost, we're just going to say 1,500 students out of your 20,000 students. Now, they really should be thought of as customers or clients as opposed to reportees, but whatever. You're aware that when you lost your percentage, right? We're going to go with 7% or seven and a half percent. You lost that. There was a little bit of financial sting, but really on the whole, you netted out okay. But you don't want to lose any more students. In fact, you want to pull some of them back or maybe attract other students from neighboring districts because you're going to offer things. So this is where we're going to get back into the, well, they want to destroy public education. They want it to blow away in the wind. Well, okay, like I've said in the past, personally, me in a perfect world, there would be no need for government education, but we're not there. It's not going to happen. We accept the world that we're in. So be that is the case, how can we make government education the best it could possibly be? Well, one, you know, in Europe, they have a tracked system. And they actually tried that on me when I was in middle school. They tried to track it, right? We're going to put the troublemaker students in this kind of track, this group here. We're going to put all the average, right? The standard deviation left and right, maybe two standard deviations left and right. They're going to go into the standard classes. And then you're going to get your smart, your slightly disruptive because they're bored students. We're going to put them in another group of classes and we're going to try and tailor our teaching, our style to those different groups. Well, it works to a degree. It creates some issues. But it works because you're able to tailor to the students that are before you. You don't treat every student exactly the same because let me tell you, every student is not exactly the same. I know it's a shock, but little Johnny is not the same as little Mary. And little Frank is not the same as little Johnny. And little Susan is not the same as little Mary. They have different needs, they have different desires, things they want to learn, different educational interests. If we're, if we're going to look at how can we make our school district better, we have to offer targeted opportunities. Now I know there's a big emphasis on teachers and their education and their training and their experience. That's all well and good. But let me ask you something. How much education do you think it really takes to teach a second grader how to do second grade math? Grammar and handwriting, which apparently we don't even do anymore. I'm not saying it's skilled or that it's, I'm not saying there's no skill. I'm not saying that there's no effort, art, any of that, not at all. What I'm saying is probably don't need somebody with a master's degree or a doctorate to come down and teach second graders how to do things. That doesn't mean that that second grade teacher is not valuable. That doesn't mean that there isn't an innate need for second grade teachers. It's just an observation that the level of transferred knowledge is at a lesser level than somebody teaching, I don't know, high level economics or algebra or chemistry. The issue is you can't get those students to do high level algebra, economics or chemistry if they don't understand the building blocks that they would have gotten back in second grade. And if we're shortchanging them in second grade, by the time they get to 10th grade, they're not going to be prepared and ready to do that. And again, this goes back to the idea, not every student learns the same. Not every student is capable of doing things the same way at the same time. And we'll avoid the entirety of the situation where government schools are targeted to cater to the females. That's only natural when you have a majority of your teachers that are female and female students naturally like that environment better than boys. But we can work on that situation later. We're just, we're dealing with the conceptual thing here that one, not every student learns the same way. Not every student learns the same thing at the same time. How might we do this? Well, we can take away some of the stigma that little Johnny and little Frankie don't understand the same thing at the same time. We can take away the false expectation that every first grader must be able to do all these things before they're allowed to go to second grade. We could also do away with the option that we must promote them when they're a specific age. We could also do away with the idea that we're going to lower our requirements for graduation so low that there's no excuse for 98% of the students not graduating. There, there are many ways that this could be approached. Now in today's day and age, I mean, a bachelor's degree is held at the same equivalency as what a high school diploma would have been in probably the 60s. And if you don't have a master's degree at this point, it's like not having a bachelor's degree in the 1990s. I'm not sure that's for better or for worse, but that's just the world we live in. But what if we were to, I don't know, look at targeting to make our exceptional students succeed beyond what they would get in a normal education? What if we were to look at targeting and aligning some of these students to be able to be well-prepared? You know, they talk about the dual credit program. They talk about the AP classes, which I guess are going to be phased out and put into a dual credit role, which I think is excellent. If you can graduate high school and you've already got 30 credits towards college because you've been in a partnership with Cowen College or UNT or Texas A&amp;M Commerce or whatever, why wouldn't you want to do that? Is, doesn't everybody benefit from this? Isn't this a good thing for our society? But again, you can't get there if you don't structure it so that these young people can see the benefit and they can see a way to success. If you give everybody that participation trophy, if you tell everybody, well, that's okay, that's close enough, they don't ever exceed that. They're not driven to do better. And again, I fully recognize not every student is motivated the same way. When you have a track system, for better or for worse, it offers you options. And I'm not saying that that's the be all end all. It seems to me that we have three high schools. If we're going to innovate, why don't we look at doing like a track system over at McKinney High? Do a classical system or classical school system, right? Run it out of North. If you want to do, you know, the standard, basic system that we do right now, keep that over at the, one of the, one of the other high schools, right? So you've got three different high schools doing slightly different things and you monitor and see who does better in which way. You roll out your statistics and see, do we see any anomalies? Do we see any changes? Are there any improvements or decreases? Or is a certain section or population better impacted or detrimentally impacted? But we have to be honest about that. And if we're going to pretend that different populations don't react differently to different styles of teaching, I mean, we're fooling ourselves. You can't treat all students the same. Not all cultures are the same. Not all socioeconomic systems are the same. That doesn't mean that they don't deserve that education. That doesn't mean that their parents aren't paying for that education. That doesn't mean that we don't need to accommodate and work with them. But what that means is we have to come up with a couple of different options so we can better address that. And if you're doing that and you say, hey, we're going to offer this opportunity at North, this opportunity at High and over at Boyd here, we're going to do the same thing we've been doing for 50 years. So if you're happy with that, by all means, keep your student there. But if you want to try the classical or you want to try like a tracked version where we're going to allow students to do things at their own speed up to a point, go there. And see what happens. Offer the opportunity for the parents to determine what high school do they want their kids to go to? And I know what that means. That means you're going to have to reconfigure. That means you're going to have to readjust your student population. You're going to have to readjust where your teachers are deployed. That's okay, that's their job. How many people do you know that have careers that have to relocate every couple of years? I know quite a few. How many that lose their job and they have to relocate? How many that lose their job and they have to relocate? I know quite a few. You're working in the school district. You're not going to go to this school anymore. You're going to go to that school. Yeah, it's five miles down the road. Get over it. I mean, look, and while we're on it, one last thing, one last fallacy, right? That I have to refute. Nobody is hating on the teachers. I would go so far as to say that whatever success that we have documented in McKinney ISD has far more to do with the devoted staff and teachers of each and every school that they work in than anything the administration or the school board has to do with it. I would say that they accomplish that in spite of the school board in the administration. I don't think I'm going too far on a limb here because I got to tell you, the vast majority of those teachers and those staff members, they like getting paid, but they feel called to that job. And if they don't, they leave. That's why you lose teachers because they realize they didn't make the right choice. This isn't what works best for them. You shouldn't hold that against them. I applaud the fact that they say, you know what? This doesn't work for me. I'm going to go do something else. And you open up that opportunity for somebody else that might come in and do a better job. But when they're leaving, if there's a reason or a reoccurring reason or problem that they say is why they're leaving, we probably ought to look into that and change tactics or improve the situation. So that we remove that impediment from them for those teachers being successful. I mean, this is all basic logic. This is how you would run a business. This is how you would treat your coworkers. So yes, we want to offer these opportunities. We want to offer different ways of approaching things. We want to make it adaptable to the students that actually are going to be benefited from the product that the school district is offering. You don't think that we don't have probably 15% of those teachers on the school district payroll right now that couldn't do a better job if they were allowed to? You don't think that at least half of them aren't beaten down by all the rules and the regulations and the nonsense that dictates their lives from day to day and that they couldn't maybe handle things a little bit differently? Or better yet, the whole idea where the teachers need to have a safe environment. Well, when you punish a teacher for punishing little Johnny or little Mary, or you won't let them kick out of your school or be kicked out of your school or out of the class and there's really no consequences for the bad behavior. Why would you think that the teachers want to keep putting them up with that stuff? And I find it interesting that the majority of the teachers that are very pro board are the ones that have retired. And my children went through and they did a great job and they graduated five years ago or 10 years ago. Yeah. Okay. Fine. But that doesn't do anything about the here and the now. That doesn't deal with the issues that we see right here, right now. Now my friends, yeah, the opposition team, yeah, they're fixated on inappropriate books, pornography in the, in the school district. Okay. Still hasn't been dealt with. They spent a lot of time talking about just the whole idea that they get shut down and they don't get heard and they make this arduous process in order to deal with stuff that doesn't need to be available to minor children. So maybe that bothers you. Okay. But did you listen to anything else they have to say? Do you, are you even the slightest bit interested in what they bring to the table, what they're going to offer? Or you can continue to get the same stuff you've been getting for nearly 40 years. Or 20 years or 12 years or wherever we're at with these, some of these people's track record. I mean, great. You serve 10 years, retire. You serve 20 years. Yeah, you're past retirement. We appreciate your input. We appreciate your character for wanting to serve. We appreciate what you've done, but now you need to pass the baton. You need to move on and let the next generation come up into leadership. Nobody's going to lead if they're not given an opportunity. And just because you're a placeholder on a board somewhere, doesn't mean you're quality leadership. What it means is that we need to be nice enough and kind enough to thank you for your service and encourage you to pass the baton and move on. You can say all you want about people being crazies or not caring or make up whatever hyperbolic situation doom and gloom you want, but I can assure you, anybody that's running for school board wants what's best for the children. They want what's best for the district. Now you may not agree with some of the things that they believe is going to make it better. I can respectfully go along with that. I may think you're right. I may think you're wrong. I'm not super animated about any one specific issue because I myself, this isn't my thing. This isn't the thing that my life dwells on. Although listening to the last couple of months of my podcast, you might think otherwise. But the reality is, is it hits very close to home. Every child that graduates, if they can't think for themselves, if they don't understand the world around them, if they don't have a general idea of what our country is, what our state is, where they come from, what they're going to do and the opportunities that still exist for them to take advantage of as individuals in a mostly free country. And then have the tools that they learned and picked up in their education system, we have done them all a disservice. Now I heard that, you know, some people are upset because their version of God doesn't, you know, mesh with their version of God, right? Meaning the opposition's version of God doesn't jive with their version of God. Pretty sure it was, uh, Bob Dylan said, you gotta serve somebody. I myself, I am fully content with every person out there serving God. I would prefer they serve the God that I serve. Because if they don't, they're going to end up serving government or they're going to end up serving some other false God because everybody serves somebody. Even if that false God is you, because you serve yourself and you alone. That level of selfishness doesn't work well for a society. Just saying. And with that, I've gone a little long, but I hope it was worth your time, worth your while. Following up on the interview that I put up yesterday. I highly encourage you, go back if you haven't already, go back and listen to episode 403. It's about 35 minutes long total. It's the interview with a guy that had the audacity to speak the truth to the school district and they banned him for life. And it was only when the T E A stepped in and said, yeah, you can't do that, that they backed off. Check it out. It's an interesting story. Well worth your time. With that, this has been According to Callus. And like I said, you can help me help you get the word out. Like, share, subscribe to the show. Follow me on the, you know, social medias. All right. At According to Callus. I've got Telegram channel. I'm at Gab. I'm at MeWe on occasion and I'm still on Facebook. You can follow me at whatever your favorite pod catcher is. And if you're feeling particularly happy with what I've been doing, do me a favor, rate and review this show. Help me out. And I will see you on the other side.